Okay, everybody, welcome to the October Watertown School Board meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the items under number two, the consent agenda, 2.1 rule call. Please note, all but Stuart Stein are in attendance this evening. 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest this evening to be disclosed from board members? 2.3, we need a review and approval of the agenda, so we could have a motion, please.
I move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Lor. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. 2.4, approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2022 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the September 12th meeting.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 2.5, we'll receive the financial reports for September.
Thank you. In the general capital outlay and special education funds, a small amount of tax proceeds along with federal funds was reported. The federal funds are expenditures from last fiscal year and are noted as receivables and reported under last fiscal year activity. Official enrollment counts were confirmed at month end and therefore state aid for both the general and special education funds will be adjusted next month in consideration of actual versus estimated counts. In the general fund, this fund's ending cash position of 6.5 million reflects a decrease when compared to the prior year and is an intended decrease to spend down cares allocations received in previous years. The ending cash balance in the special education fund of 814,000 is slightly higher than last fiscal year. Lake Area Tech received tuition and fees in relation to the first semester. The first quarter state aid payment in the amount of 1,817,000 was received, resulting in revenue exceeding expenditures for the month. This fund's ending cash position reflects an intended decrease over the previous two years. As construction in progress takes place on the diesel expansion in Archway, this fund will maintain a steady decline. Activity for the Lake Area Tech was also had in the funds of financial aid, accommodating grants and financial assistance to students, as well as LHTC bookstore, food service, and edicare. In K-12's Enterprise Fund of K-12 Nutrition, due to the replenishing of food inventory, the expenditures exceeded the revenue for the month as typical. This fund's ending cash position reflects an increase when compared to that of the prior year. In the Employee Benefit Trust, the claims and administrative costs exceeded the premium during the month. This fund's ending cash position is well below previous years. The 2023 renewal meeting noted that total claims have increased by 21% from prior year. Claims to premium ratios will be reviewed throughout the year to plan accordingly for the future of the plan. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
If no questions for Heidi, we'll move on to item three and the discussion items for Lake Area Tech. First of all, 3.1, is there any public input on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area this evening? All right, then, item 3.2 is we're noting a work session for the joint meeting with the school board and the Lake Area Tech Advisory Council on October 13th from noon to 2:00. Anything you wanted to add to that?
That meeting will be on the fourth floor of the Student Center at Lake Area Tech.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the action items for Lake Area Tech. First of all, personnel and 4.1.1, the resignations.
So, this month, actually, Lake Area Tech does not have any resignations.
Okay, then we'll move to 4.1.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
So, before you, you have a variety of contract recommendations and addendums. This is typical as we start the fall semester, particularly given the continued enrollment growth. We recommend approving the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the contracts.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any comments or questions on the contract? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then 4.2, the property items. We have 4.2.1, consider the NIST MEP Center Award.
Lake Area Technical College recommends approval of the Financial Assistance Award from the National Institute of Standards and Technology, also known as NIST. This grant is worth 3,561,000 over five years with the option to renew for an additional five years. The cooperative agreement allows Lake Area Tech to manage the South Dakota Manufacturing Technology Solutions. Currently, the University of South Dakota manages the organization and the transition will begin prior to the grant period of performance of January 1. The synergy between Lake Area Tech's mission and the investment in the new advanced manufacturing center within the Archway project made Lake Area Tech's application competitive and so we were awarded this federal grant. Additional details on the federal grant will be released from the National Institute of Standards and Technology later this week or next.
Okay, could we have a motion on the property item?
I move approval of the Financial Assistance Award as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Seconded by Iverson. Any comments or questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the discussion items for 14-4 and 5.1, is there any public input this evening for agenda or non-agenda items for the K-12 side? If not, we've got 5.2, the Northeast Tech High School report.
Thank you. The Board of Superintendents did not meet in October, but we will meet again on November 1st. And then we'll update the full board after that at the November meeting. But just a reminder to those board members who are on the full board of Northeast Tech, we'll meet next Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:45, so get ready for that.
All right, thanks. And now, 5.3, we'll have an update on the high school alternative education program.
Oh, there we go. Thank you for allowing us to share tonight on the Arrow Success Academy. The Arrow Success Academy, it was a year-long process last year where we did a K-12 approach to looking at alternative education within our school district. You want to go to the next? And on that committee, we had teachers, administrators, school psychologists, and Mr. Iverson as our school board member, looking at various alternative schools and different areas within alternative schools that we could look at as we're developing what that would look like for us. In the end, we decided to focus on high school alternative education and our referral criteria was non-special education students, largely because we already have some specific programs in place for that population of students. We looked at academic concerns, behavioral concerns, and social-emotional concerns as well as how an alternative schedule could help support students that are at risk. As far as the placement process that we ended up looking at, we did look at the overall concerns of a group of students, students that were not successful within our high school. We looked at the interventions that were in place and the successes of those interventions and documented those. From there, we had an onboarding process, a referral process in which we identified the students and then an application, formal application process that really identified the areas of concern in the school, the social-emotional aspect, as well as in the home. When we had our onboarding with our students, a part of that, we have an interview and a parent meeting where they come in and we interview the student to get their feedback as well as the parent and we document that. We have a consent contract that both of them sign when they're entering the program. And this just shows, kind of goes through what we would expect within our program and what our targets are for that program. As part of that conversation, we're focusing on that path to graduation because a lot of these students maybe wouldn't be successful in our school in the traditional sense or they haven't shown that they have. So, we want the eye on the prize on that and our prize is that graduation. So, we want them to be thinking about, I'm in this program with the intent that I'm going to graduate from Watertown High School. And then we looked at the admittance with that and through that process and all those meetings, then those students do come in with our program. Go ahead, next one. As far as currently what we have, our core classes, we're focusing on the science, the English, the social studies, and the math. You can see that we have seven students doing science right now, 11 in English, eight in social studies, and eight in math. Four students are taking advantage of some of our Apex courses and four are currently in the one-to-one mentorship where they earn credit for going out and working within the workforce. Two students are taking Watertown High School classes in conjunction with being at the Arrow Success Academy, that being earth science and weight training. And then we find a large benefit for our students that can continue to use those hands-on courses at Northeast Tech High School. Currently, three of them are taking advantage of that in addition to being over at the alternative school, which is at the old PD Center. As far as our objectives, when we developed the program, we wanted to be able to teach students life skills and promote citizenship, improve our academic performance to achieve Watertown High School diploma, decrease the dropout rate. Hopefully, through this program, we can help them find hope for where they're at in their education and the successes that they can have and improve their attendance. We also do some things, have some things in place to help with the drug and alcohol prevention side of that. And I'll talk about that a little bit when I talk about the staffing for what we have right now. Currently, Steph Hegeman has been our director in coordinating all of the activities through our ASA. She's been instrumental in setting up meetings with parents, kind of helping us define our handbook and our referral process and our intake process. We have Lisa Braun, who is a paraprofessional. We moved her over from the high school over into that position to kind of assist as we're working with students. Stephanie Cole is our math instructor. Ty Himmel is our English. Marina Johnson is our science and Brody Reese is our social studies. When you look at those four core class teachers, keep in mind, right now, they are going over there just one block of the day for those core classes and they're teaching the rest of their caseload over at the high school. Michelle Octorberg, our Project Success Coordinator, is instrumental in providing some services over at our ASA and doing different group activities, working on that social-emotional, teaching some of those life skills and promoting that citizenship. With that staffing, then, we also have, that puts us at three full-time FTEs, two being certified and one being classified. And then Michelle Melberg helps us with the one-to-one mentorship that she does over at the high school.
So, when we were developing this program, we did a lot of research and talked a lot in our committee and we even did some visits and wanted to take some spinoffs from some other programs. The supports that the district provided us this year is we knew district-wide, we follow the Boys Town model and we wanted to implement that there as well. So, the district brought in a trainer for five days this summer and our ASA staff were invited to participate in that. This Boys Town training is going to focus on your social skills and your life skills. The students earn positive points, both for behavior and academic achievement, and negative points primarily based on behavior. If they get a third negative point in one area, that refers to an office referral. And then, they do a daily reconciliation, kind of keep a checkbook register of their points and they can purchase with those points some extrinsic motivators that they came up with so they have some ownership in the program as well. For academic interventions, we knew we needed an academic focus because many of our students are behind credit-wise. So, we do daily goal-setting with them, daily progress monitoring, I do as well as the teachers. I set weekly target goals for each student. And then, at the end of each week, we see if they have met those target goals. If they have met those goals, they stay at or move up a level. If they have not met those, they move down a level based on where they're at and what they're doing. Taking a spinoff of what Harrisburg High School does in their alternative education program, we went with some of their leveling ideas, which would be an adjusted daily schedule, having a dedicated work location. So, if they're failing, say, per se, science class, they have to be with that science teacher during that block that she is in the building and then they can earn other privileges, whether it's listening to music or doing some sensory time or those kinds of things. The student demographics, right now, we have 11 students in our program. Three of those students are in their sophomore year and have an average of 3.5 credits. So, you can see that they're significantly behind. Two of the students are in their junior year and have an average of 9.5 credits. Four of the students are seniors this year and they have an average 14 and a half credits. And we have two students that are in their fifth year, still working to meet all of the requirements and they have an average of 17.75 credits. The average GPA for our students over at Arrow Success Academy right now is 1.376. 18% of our students are other-than-white, identified by them through campus. 64% are female and 36% are male. The thing that really hit me when I was pulling this data is 73% of our students have a diagnosed mental or behavioral health problem. And so, I think we've seen that escalate over the last couple of years and so hopefully, this is a safe environment that they can be successful in. And then, when I was pulling their average assessment scores, math, you'll see the first number is their average smarter balance score and the second number is their percentile on the NWEA MAP test that we currently give. So, we're right around that 40% percentile on the MAP data that we have. So, these are average students. We just need to find a way to meet their needs and get them successful in academics. Our big successes, and this was really exciting, credits earned this year, out of those 11 students, already 16 credits have been earned. Now, this is a caveat, this might seem a little bit inflated because some of these classes, they started last year and didn't complete. So, they've completed this year or maybe they've started and, you know, this is just midterm. This data was all of October 3rd. And of those 16 credits, three and a half of those have been earned in the one-to-one to one mentoring program. This program is where we have a business mentor, work with an educator mentor, work with the student, and we support each other through business, school, and student work and talk to the student across the board and other things. Not only do they log their hours, and I think it's 150 hours equals one credit, but they also have to do some journaling and do some work with Department of Labor as well. And Lisa Johnson's been instrumental in that. One of our goals was decreasing absences. And 45% of our students have improved in this area, which is five of the 11. However, four of them have had some extenuating circumstances and so, we look for those numbers to improve throughout the school year behaviors. This was another one of our target goals and our office referrals have reduced by 65% with this group of 11 students. As of October 3rd of last year, we were at 26 office referrals. This year, we're at nine. And for ISS OSS, we've reduced this number by 82%. Last year, we were at 11 and this year, we're at two. Community involvement is something that I'm really passionate about getting involved in our program this year. We have Project Success coming in. I've worked with Mr. Barrios and Dr. Danielson, as well as some other staff at the high school and through HSA to get some speakers in during times and expose our kids to some different stories and some different successes in the community. Anticipated growth, last year when we talked, we're like, okay, this building can house 20 kids. And I said, oh, guys, 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 let's start this small and let's do it right and let's get the kinks worked out and then we can grow. Because when we met with Ryan Rollinger from Harrisburg High School, he said, we're in year 10 of our program and we're still making changes. So, my initial target was 10 students. Currently, we're at 11 and one of them is that super senior that's going to graduate, hopefully. And then, for quarter two, Patty and I had talked and I said, let's talk about upping our student semester too, but things are going so smoothly and going so well. I think we can up by a couple of students, starting quarter two. And we will have our first graduate, so we'll have two or three open slots. Then, coming up at the end of October. And then, quarter three, our target is 14 to 16 students. And quarter four, our target is 16 to 20 students. So, hopefully, we get to 20 by the end of the year, but we're going to start and do it right. I reached out to the parents and said, hey, we're presenting to the school board and what do you have to say about this program? And these are some things that came from them. This program has been a huge benefit to my son. He likes the small classes, freedom, and opportunities to work at his own pace so he doesn't shut down. We have come a long way in two years and being able to work ahead will hopefully lead to an early graduation. This is of a student who, two years ago, I don't know if graduation was even going to be in the plans for this student. And we're on track now and we're working ahead and possibly an early graduation next year. After the last two years, I was willing to try anything. I've only received one phone call from the school this year and it was the most positive call I've received in two years. And then, the last parent said, the anxiety of walking into the high school was the reason for poor attendance and failing classes. This is no longer a problem and a graduation is coming. Because this is a students program and they're developing it and we're working out kinks along the way, I asked them for some feedback and this is some information I got from them. One-on-one with teachers helps to get to know each other better, so we're working on that, building relationships. I've always said that 75 to 80% of my job is strictly building relationships. I actually come into school this year, this is like my second home. Less students and less distractions is less problems, another student said. And the daily goals really help me stay focused on what I need to get done. I think if you would have done this in the past, I wouldn't have fallen behind. So, we're open to any questions.
Thank you. And just a huge thank you to your entire committee, to both of you. This is a long time coming, it's a long time that we've needed this, to have these students looked after. And it really impacts three groups. These students who needed a special place and a different environment, regular students in the high school who were distracted by disruptions, and finally, for the staff. So, this is such a right path and I thank you so much.
It's been exciting to see the successes that we're having and the confidence that we're building in some of those students as well.
And I hope we can continue doing something for K-8 as well. Thank you. This is great. I also read your entire packet here.
Oh, the handbook?
The student handbook, yeah. So, great detail in here, very helpful.
Thank you to Ryan Rollinger for a lot of that.
Yeah.
He shared. Yeah, it's for guests.
Yep. Thanks.
I want to say thanks to Dr. Heath. You know, she came on board last year and we tasked her right away with running this year-long process to examine our alternative education. And one of the reasons we focused on the high school first is, you may be noted in the presentation, but it was gen ed only. So, we do not have special education students over there. And so, focused on the general education and the graduation pathway first, that doesn't necessarily mean K-8 will not have some revisions or a continued look at it. But one of the things that is truly tied in together, more so at the K-8 level, is the special education piece. And right now, finding special education teachers and to look in particular at some of the specialty areas has been an issue. And so, if we can kind of keep that pipeline full from a staffing issue, it's going to be easier to take a look and kind of intertwine the K-8 piece of it. But just the one-year look and then the revisions at the high school does not necessarily mean like the K-8 piece of it is not still under review for the best possible use of our staff and the available funds we have because that was pointed out last year as well, that we have some needs in that area too. And so, we're going to stay on that. And then, I really appreciate the staff. One of the things that I appreciated the most with the committee look and then what I've seen as it's been rolled out is, one, we're off to such a great start for the students and I love seeing the amount of credits that have already been earned in the comments. But the biggest piece that has been so rewarding to me is, it's a continued approach that focuses on what do these students need in order to be successful as opposed to kind of a catch-all, one look. And so, I just appreciate the staff, Mrs. McClemmons, Mrs. Hegeman, the way you've approached this and put this together and made it fly here.
I would say, echo these comments that have been made. And I really like the idea of the one-on-one mentorship. I think that's a great idea for people to get out and spend time in the workforce to find out what skills you need and just how important it is to be punctual, to be there every day and the things that you're trying to reinforce that are important out in the workforce. And I think it's really important. I like how, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have exactly the number of people and we'd have a nice big program, but we had to start small, but you're doing it right, so thanks.
Thank you for your support.
And I would put that plug in, when you talk about the one-to-one mentoring, we have a Bisco Board that meets monthly and they have been big advocates for this program. It's Business Industry School Coalition. And our business community has been very active and is looking for more opportunities if we have students who fit that bill. And they have always offered their support, whether it's, you know, work boots or certain, you know, uniforms, that kind of thing. And so, that gift is always out there from our Bisco Board. We've appreciated over the years all the people who've been on that.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to hearing from you in the future to see how the success continues. Moving on to the action items, 6.1, approval of the bills. Could we have a motion?
I move approval of the bills.
Second.
Motion by Moulton and second by Lor. Any comments or questions on the bills? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to 6.2 and the personnel. First of all, 6.2.1 resignations.
Before you is a couple of resignations. One was added on the amended personnel report. Todd Williams for Custodian at Intermediate. So, looking for your approval of these resignations.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve resignations.
Second.
Motion by Lor and second by Iverson. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 6.2.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Before you are several contract recommendations for social studies standards review. Over the past few weeks, we looked for staff to help provide feedback on the new proposed social studies standards. So, that was helpful. Then, as well, some additional IEP responsibilities that were handed out as we are short-staffed with sped teachers. So, that makes up a majority of those for your approval.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve contract.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any comments or questions on those recommendations?
I have a couple of questions. Has this social studies group met already?
Yes, we've had two different meetings with our social studies staff. The first was K twelve, and the second was specifically the seven twelve. And have discussed the standards. One of the biggest things we found from the staffing piece is just the volume. So for example, and this was part of public testimony at a state board of ed meeting, but the eighth grade standards have thirteen current, thirteen, I may get the numbers slightly not exact, but thirteen standards with forty-one sub-standards. And the current proposal has a hundred and thirty sub-standards. So just sheer volume of content from a, from an instructional piece. That's been one of the big things. And then there are some, you know, some concerns about the level of difficulty at the different grade levels.
I've read through the standards, and I guess I would add that K four, our grading system doesn't currently really reward advanced, superior, excellent. There isn't a level four on the grade sheet. So if we are going to raise standards in a subject area, I would look that we should have some kind of incentive to students to excel. So that would be comment there. I think, did you make comments to the board about some of this? Did you pass on anything from the committee?
Just, no, I talked more about the fact that I did testify in opposition, and my testimony in opposition was more on time and money. Time in order, if we are going to make the change, coupled with the time it would need to teach that volume of standards, and then the money it would take then to compensate people for the extra time.
I can understand the time. I think there was some trepidation about finding resources to support all these standards. And I can see, they're out there. The resources are there. I spent forty years providing resources to teachers, and I know I can find them. So I think others can, too. Another issue I would, we really need to look at coordinating subject areas. Perhaps English and history. I know when I taught English, I always coordinated with the history teacher. If I was doing Greek tragedy or Greek myths, he was teaching Greek history at the same time. Students loved it. They loved the coordination between those two areas, and there's many other areas. If you remember way back, there was a PBS series called Connection. Coordinated all kinds of different subject areas. And students can see readily how things are interrelated. So that's important. And I would also emphasize that this is another reason we need a K four and even K six anthology, a basal reader, because it provides those resources in a written format. Myths, legends, including Native American myths and so on, but a wide range of different types of literature that coordinate with history. So I think basal readers are highly important. So, yep, it's something that we're going to have to look at, work with, and see where we go.
We're certainly aware that if these standards are adopted, you know, we're committed to working with them and finding the materials and, you know, doing our best to teach them, so.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Jean. We have the motion and the second to approve these contract recommendations and addendums. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And six point two point three, approve the volunteer list.
Presented to you this month is a list of district volunteers. These are approved yearly for insurance liability purposes.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the volunteer list.
Motion by Lore and second by Iverson. Any comments or questions on those? I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that step up and help out in our schools. They perform a very valuable job there. All right, so all in favor of approval of the volunteer list, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Move to six point three in the property items. And first of all, six point three point one, the consider a reduced meal price.
Thank you. Under the USDA Federal Nutrition Program, there are three categories of pricing based on household income, free, reduced, and paid. The federal program allows for local control on the reduced charge, in which it's currently set at forty cents for a reduced lunch meal and thirty cents for a reduced breakfast meal. It is recommended to update the reduced price to zero or free beginning on October eleventh, and allow for families that qualify for reduced pricing to receive meals free of charge. Under the federal program identification, the family would be considered qualified for reduced pricing. However, the district would waive the reduced charge. This will cost the nutrition service program an estimated $25,000 for the year and have an impact on two hundred and seventy-five students and their families.
Okay, we need a motion.
I move that we approve the reduced meal price.
Motion by Iverson. Second by Moulton. Comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now, six point four, approve the 2021-22 financial report.
Thank you. The fiscal year ending 2022 annual financial report of the Watertown School District has been submitted and approved by the Department of Ed. The following report provides a briefing of each fund at fiscal year end, tables related to the 2023 adopted budget, federal cares breakdowns for both K twelve and L A T C. Also included is L A T C's profile, found on page thirty-one, and K twelve's strategic plan, beginning on page forty. Please note that the PDF version of this report can be found on the district's website. Pages one through seven of the document include a briefing of each fund at fiscal year end. The general fund originally anticipated a use of cash on hand with actual transactions coming in at 692,000 use of fund balance. This fund did not receive a transfer in from the capital outlay fund. It is the intention of the fund to decrease a portion of capital outlay support through fiscal year twenty-four in order to maximize future projects and facility planning. The June thirtieth, 2022, ending fund balance of the general fund was 7.6 million or 27.75 percent of the fiscal year's expenditures. Future anticipation of this fund includes funding under S R round three to offset identified positions that assist with learning and academic loss. This anticipation and funding is estimated at $712,000 per year through fiscal year 2024. This accommodation of federal funding will minimize the effect of the anticipated enrollment decline. The ending fund balance in the capital outlay fund is at 10 million, with notation that 2 million is reserved for the last year's phase of the high school renovation project. Excluding the renovation set aside from the balance, allocate 7.9 million in available funding. This is an increase of 3.5 million from fiscal year 2020. The special education fund had an ending fund balance on June thirtieth of 678,000. This fund balance is 9.10, 9.10 percent of 2122 expenses, which is maintained from prior year with increased expenditures. A comfortable level of funding operation within the special education fund would be a 15 percent fund balance as we move forward into the new fiscal year. The district continues to monitor this fund with continued ways to accommodate the needs of its special education students at an affordable means. The financial activity of Lake Area Technical College reflects an anticipated financial decrease of 1.4 million. The diesel expansion building project was approved at 8.1 million, with funding to be accommodated by funds from private donations in the I'm in capital campaign. The archway complex building project was approved at 20 million, with 8 million to be accommodated by funds noted in the foundation as identified as naming rights, Dana J. Dykhouse Business Center of Learning, as well as 7.5 million as contributed under House Bill 1031. The June thirtieth, 2022, ending fund balance of L A T C was 11.8 million and will accommodate cash balance fluctuations created by construction in progress. Other activity noted within the report includes budgeted activity as well as profit and loss statements within the enterprise funds of both K twelve and L A T C, including the operation of K twelve nutrition, arena concessions, drivers ed, preschool, and for L A T C, the bookstore, food service, and educare. Major identifiers that I would like to point out is that K twelve nutrition operated under the federally approved SSO operation, in which provided free breakfast and lunch meals to students last fiscal year. L A T C educare received 120, 310 dollars in both state and federal cares funding. Aside from operation in the major and enterprise funds, the district also oversees 29 million, as noted on page eight of the report, in custodial and internal service funds, including self-funded insurance and L A T C financial aid. The balance sheet for self-funded insurance is noted on page seventeen, in which notes a $1 million decline in available cash on hand. In a recent renewal meeting, it was noted that the district claims have increased by 21 percent from prior year. It is anticipated that this fund will decrease by 1.5 million this fiscal year, with an estimated fund balance just under 5 million. The need to increase premium is intended as we review the 2023 renewal and plan for negotiations for the 2324 year. This document provides a recap of a previous year, a look into anticipations for 2023, and general information to assist in decision-making for the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, first of all, we get a motion to approve the financial report?
I move approval of the financial report, the highlights just presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Lore. Now, is there any comments or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And we'll move to six point five, student enrollment requests. Six point five point one, the open enrollment requests.
Yes, we have one open enrollment for your approval.
Motion, please.
I can make a motion for the open enrollment.
Motion by Lore. Second by Moulton, to approve the open enrollment requests. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and the 132810 requests.
We have three 132810 requests, recommended for your approval.
Okay, motion, please.
I move approval of the 38, 13 dash 28 dash 10 requests, as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Lore. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now we'll move into the communications, and first of all, the administrative report.
Yeah, just a reminder, Vice President Stiles mentioned this, that it was in the Lake Area portion, but Thursday, the thirteenth, at noon on fourth floor of Lake Area, the joint meeting of the Watertown School Board and the Lake Area Strategic Council. This week is National School Lunch Week. We are celebrating that by offering all students a free meal on Friday, so a free lunch. So for those students out there, join us for lunch. And this one will be on Watertown Foods Food Service Program. And then we will delve into the financial report a little bit further with a second meeting. We thought it was going to be a second meeting in October. It'll creep into November. We're looking at 5:30 at the district offices on November first. That's a Tuesday. So second meeting before the November fourteenth meeting. And then finally, if I could have Mr. Barrios put up, but just an update for the board and the public. But if you've driven by, the turf is down and asphalt is down, and those are actually outdated already because they were taken this morning. And if you drive by yet tonight, you will see most of the lettering being filled in, including the big W in the middle and the Lake Area logo, so. But Phase One is progressing nicely. That still has a December one completion. And I'm putting it out, the disclaimer, you see asphalt for the track. That does not mean complete. That has a three-week cure time on it with the actual track surface to be sprayed on. So it's still a construction zone, construction area there at this point. So not open for walking, running, or use yet by the public.
Okay, thank you. Anything on seven point two, the board report to the superintendent?
I'd just like to thank Karen Capers, who had their big fundraiser and activities and show this week. Fine Arts Department could not function without them. Big thank you.
And we should also thank the Arrow Education Foundation. They hosted, or had Harvest this past, was that last week?
Last Saturday.
Yeah, and so thanks to the foundation board and the volunteers that helped out with that event, that funds grants for our teachers.
And I think we'll have, I don't have an official number for you right now because we have a board meeting tomorrow, so we're hoping that we'll get some of that info. But by all, all information I have from our director, it was a very successful evening, and went, after a couple of year absence, it went really well.
Anything else for board report? Okay, if not, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I move we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Moulton and second by Lore. And the executive session is for the purpose of discussing personnel, and there will be no action taken at the conclusion of the executive session. So thanks, everybody, for coming.